Six thirty-three, Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with equal justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Dave Dillon.
Here.
Council members Ken Mueller.
Here.
Norris Johnson.
Here.
Lindsay Larson.
Here.
Lori Game.
Here.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
I'll second that.
We have a couple additions to add. Under nine C ordinances and resolutions, add resolution twenty-three twenty-four approval for non-DOT drug and alcohol testing for commercial drivers' policy. Under thirteen B, add temporary off-premise sales for El Jalisco for Rec Fest. Thirteen C, special event app for airport fly-in August fourth through sixth. I get a motion to add those.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, agenda passes. On the consent agenda, I'll get a motion first for the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
On the consent agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes from June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, approval of bills, indemnification for bike trails, and resolution twenty-three twenty-one donations. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Approved or opposed? Consent agenda passes. Open forum. If there's anyone here tonight that would like to address any issue that is not on the agenda, please just stand and state your name and address, I believe.
My name is Byron Mullet. My address is one-two-five-six-seven-one-hundred-twentieth Avenue, Malacca. And I guess what I was coming to ask about and a request to be possibly considered is the resurfacing of West River Drive that we traverse down every day. And I'm not sure if any of you have been down that street in the last, I don't know, I've been there for twenty, over twenty-six years. And it hasn't been resurfaced. It's been patched and patched and patched and patched and patched and more patched and patched and patched, more patched. It's really annoying to be driving over this road. And so I was just kind of wondering if it could be in consideration to get resurfaced. Just to make it a lot more easy. I've got lots of people that use that road. There's fifteen, there's approximately fifteen homes right on that street there before that curb within the city limits there. And I mean, it's quite a few people use that street there. I don't know. I have pictures if you'd like to see. Can I present them?
Yeah, that's fine. Yep.
What street, what is it?
West River Road.
Oh, West.
And he's absolutely right.
Oh, yeah.
So the city owns the part that's tarred?
Yeah, I, it's really bad. I know that. It's in our plan, I believe.
Not for next year. It isn't.
I thought we were gonna mill and just use the crushed stuff.
He would probably have to use his hundred thousand that we usually put in the budget for streets.
I thought we had that to grind up and just do that and not do a full.
Yeah, I'm sure Gary's got us on his radar somewhere, but I don't know exactly.
Yeah, we've had that discussion.
Right, I know, yes.
And I, and I think the plan, well, it's, the plan was to grind it up and, I don't know the technical term. You grind it up and then just flatten it out type stuff like reused to buy time.
Like a mill.
Until there's a, yeah, until there's a water sewer project on that way. But I certainly think we can talk to Gary and see where that's at and revisit it, make sure it's moving and get back to you.
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, it's just.
Do you have a phone number?
Well, it's on the list there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, feel free to call me and feel free to come visit me. It's kind of, there's many times when we take that street coming home that we're happy to get on the gravel road because it's smoother than what that road is.
Yeah, especially the last, probably two hundred yards.
Springtime, it breaks up. The one time my wife's previous car, it chunked the tar, pushed up and it heated up and drove up. She couldn't go receipt of the tar because it was bolted up so hard. So it's been, we're getting worse and worse every year. And I guess it was a little bit, then this last week seeing some new streets and alleys in town here getting paved. And it's like, oh, they can tar a alley, they can tar these little streets that maybe only have two or three people living on them. And here's a road, can they put a, would it help to put like a counter on there so you see how many people actually do use that, utilize that road? Would that make any influence on them?
Well, I think the biggest delay issue was the water sewer thing.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
Because then you don't want to tar it and then put water sewer in three years later and rip it all up and do it again.
Yeah.
But this has been talked about and we can get, talk to Gary and see where we're at and get back, yes.
I stopped in earlier this week and I was going to talk with somebody and I was told he was on vacation, so.
We did, several years ago, we did a survey of all the residents down there because we had proposed to add, you know, extending water and sewer down there. And then, because the street was bad then. And that was probably, what, eight years ago?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah.
But the residents voted down the water and sewer, you know, there's, there's a few that really need it and the rest don't really care and don't want to.
Well, and that's, that's all that gets voted on just by whether they want to do it or not?
Well, in that case, yeah, because it's a big, big expense that would be assessed on each property. And because of that delay there, or, you know, we just, it kind of got tabled, but yeah, so the street.
So like of these alleys that we see that they, each person that lives on that alley gets assessed that extra money for that taring into? Or the streets that only have three houses on them?
Water, water and sewer that gets assessed, yeah.
Got you. Okay, I got it.
But yeah, that's been, been on the radar for many years, but.
And I know we discussed a temporary issue and we'll have to see where that's at. Because it is, I agree a hundred percent, it's, it's rough down there.
I'm glad my wife's gonna get it right now. She might say worse.
There's anybody else who would like to address the council at this time? If not, then we'll move forward to requests and communications. That was a good part of the night. It'll be my honor to recognize Mr. Jim Garretts for his service on the fire department of forty years. So Jim, if you want to come up, I can walk around. And this is a certificate of appreciation presented to James Jim Garretts in recognition of forty years of service and commitment to the Malacca Fire Department and your dedication as a leader, a mentor, and a captain. Granted this twentieth day of July, two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you and congratulations. No speech?
Speech, speech.
Thanks again, Jim. Ordinances and resolutions. Resolution twenty-three twenty-two, calling for a public hearing on road right-of-way vacation on Fifth Street Southwest. Make sure I'm on the right. Okay, yep. Can I get a motion on that?
So move.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? That'll be at the August meeting. If not, all in favor? Aye. Opposed. Resolution twenty-three twenty-three, four, two passes.
We don't have that survey back yet.
Okay, moving on to resolution twenty-three twenty-three. Approval for preliminary PUD for Blue Waters Potato Patch, Malacca. I get a motion for that.
Move for approval?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that one?
Greg is here, the developer. Dave, if you wanted him to say anything.
Do you have anything new or different or anything they need to pass on?
No, just raring to go.
Okay, everything still looks good measurement-wise and all that, surveys and, okay. Anybody have any questions? All went well with the planning commission?
Yeah, really well.
Okay. Nothing else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Twenty-three, resolution twenty-three twenty-three passes. This was the added resolution, resolution twenty-three twenty-four, approval for non-DOT drug and alcohol testing for commercial drivers' policy. I get a motion for that.
So.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Is this just a modification of something that's been existing?
Just some updated language in it, yes.
Mainly the cannabis additions, right?
Yep.
Okay. And is, I think you told me today, this is league, the league recommended.
Yes.
Language.
Yep.
Okay.
So what is this changing? Does this, does it change anything to me or, or is it?
No, we already have the policy in place already for non-DOT. Now, the league just came out with the added language for cannabis that became legal. So for us, we just needed to add it and update our policy to the new language. That's all it did.
And that could be a ever-changing thing, don't you think?
The number of the cities that I'm dealing with, they're putting moratorium ordinances to address the passage of the business aspect of cannabis sale now. A lot of different things that they're looking at.
Yeah. Any other questions?
So if somebody was using over-the-counter cannabis and they got drug screened?
There could be an issue, yes. Especially if they are safety sensitive. That's meaning if they're operating equipment, police vehicles, trucks, anything of that nature, then it becomes a problem.
That was my question too, especially if you're doing it medically.
Yeah, it is addressed in there as far as prescription.
Right.
Yep. They have to look at it all.
But prescription versus just people who are using it to sleep or do whatever, that could be a problem?
It could be. The, the goal is that they don't use it while they're working and be very cautious of what they're doing.
But I think from our discussion before, it'd be more of, say, Public Works guy drove a bobcat into a building. We might do testing.
It's a requirement, yes, because they are DOT. And that is a requirement of our DOT policy, that they do have to go for testing.
Okay. I don't mean to pick on the Public Works guys, it was just the first thing I thought of. Any other questions for that? You okay, Lori?
Yeah, no, I just, I, I read it, but I still wanted clarifications.
Yeah, it's still gonna take some tweaking, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor of resolution twenty-three twenty-four? Aye. Opposed, passes. Resolution twenty-three twenty-four passes. Reports from departments, boards, and commissions, city manager.
Been talking with Bill, so they are getting a little bit farther on the airport road. I think next month you'll have a status update in the council packet for the road. I sent out letters to all the property owners along that corridor and gave them the information from the May eleventh update and kind of lays out the whole plan for that airport road. So that was a request from one of the property owners that lived along there. So they should be getting those letters and that, that'll get them very detailed information as to how that project will lay out into next year.
Anything else? Okay. Police, I think it's just the incident report. I'll see who in. Parks. I can, I can tell you they've been really busy downpouring that addition to the skate park. Yeah, it's coming along really nice. Public Works. Revised quote for the door at the senior center. So Gary's not here. I guess it comes down to whether we need, want two doors with the vestibule or do we want one door?
And this is what we had talked about at previous council meeting, just to get this to one door. So he came back with, this is the cost for that one door.
Yeah. But the issue will be with one door. It's going to be open in the winter and then closed. You're gonna have that cold air coming in for a little bit.
He said approximately ten seconds or something.
Yeah, it's not long. And they probably have that now when they're trying to hold one door open and hold another.
Thinking.
I mean, especially if they're trying to put something in the building because they don't have the access to push the button right now.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking it's just gonna be the same because they're gonna keep in that door open. The doors that are there now have the air that can go right through them. So I think we would save on some energy.
Yeah, probably be ahead.
Probably be less with a wheelchair than it would be for the double one.
Often when there's a double set like that, they're both open with the, with the push button anyway, so.
Yeah. Okay, do you need a motion for this, I'm guessing? Can I get a motion for the quote for thirty-three hundred?
Thirty-three hundred?
Yep.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion on it? All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Okay, that'll be nice to get that going. I know they've been anxious for that. Still with Public Works, the approved plans and authorized bidding for the road out at the bypass.
Let's hope the bids come in well under a hundred and ten thousand. That would be great. This will be a thirty-foot road. The width of the road will be thirty feet. We'll have to move the light pole that's there. But it's pretty straightforward as far as getting that road into there. We'll have to come up with a name for the road, so we'll work with Sam and Ally on that. Get a real name in there.
Go through the beer, beer hall.
They're gonna put extra, what are those things called?
Ballards.
Ballards.
The ballards, yes.
Yeah.
Bullards.
Barricade it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the more he could somehow get this project back to the number that we had hoped for, that would be good.
Is it a little?
We are.
Okay, and so there's an action item to approve plans?
Yes.
Did anybody make a motion?
Not yet.
Nope. Can I get a motion to approve the plans?
I'll make the motion.
One second.
Who made the motion, Lindsay? Thank you.
I'm just so excited to talk about it.
I know, right?
Yeah, it looks, it looks, but it's just, if you could somehow get it to scale back a little price-wise, that'd be great.
Yes, it would.
See, this would make provisions for the road to the south then too, in the future.
In the future, yes.
Yeah, there's nothing, nothing came up out of the testing or anything, so it should be good. Any other discussion on that? If not, all in favor of the plans? Aye. Opposed. Okay, opposed, pass. Liquor store, Vicki's here tonight. Do you have anything?
I don't.
Oh, you're just here.
I'm just here. I haven't been able to make it for a few months. I figured it was, I didn't have anything going on, better be here.
Fire department. The old ranger and skid unit request from Forest and Fire Department.
So since we got our interview side by side, I have talked to Chief Ransome about if they were interested in our old ranger and skid unit in the trailer. And they are, and they presented to buy from us for a reasonable number of five thousand dollars. I mean, it's twenty years old. It'll also help our residents because we called them multiple times for mutual aid and it'll help their residents. And we'll keep it in our area because a lot of that money was probably donated to us when we bought those units back in those days too. Anything you've got to say?
It would stay in the area and be available for mutual aid, which we do quite a bit of. Our two departments are hand-in-hand, quite a bit more than a lot of departments do. Due to our short staffing during the days, it's automatic mutual aid call when we get this app. Also, it'd be available for DNR mutual aid.
It'll be the same way we always did.
Right.
And, and in the end, it would still be here for your use, but we'd be paying for all the maintenance.
Yep. Perfect setup. Do you want a motion for that?
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to approve that sale?
I'll make that.
I'll second.
Any other discussion on it? Seems like a pretty good deal for everybody. All in favor? Aye. Opposed. It's all yours. Anything else, Jesse?
The only thing is, the new engine, we're getting specs and we're kind of getting to the pricing process. So we're getting closer to figuring out if that's all going to be in.
Could forest him by that and we use it? Okay, that sounds good. Moving on to the planning commission. Just the minutes, anything else?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nothing to act on.
Committee's unfinished business. I need a motion to remove from, to untable the consider, considering the possible refund of First Baptist Church building permit from June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll make the motion.
Second that.
Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor of that? Aye. Opposed. So discussion to consider the possible refund of First Baptist Church. Can I get a motion to consider that?
So move.
Second?
We're just discussing it? We're just considering it?
We're just discussing it.
I'll make a second.
Okay. Now we're discussing it. And I think we did a little bit last time. We've got some more information since that time from Tammy. And then I think if you want to just give a quick legal end to it.
Actually, I can wait until you guys are done speaking and then I can comment on it.
I don't, did anybody have anything before he comments?
I guess my, my only thoughts on it, or main thought was that the work that was done and the inspections that were done at this time were covered by the original permit and inspection. So this would be a kind of a duplication of those efforts. And so I think, you know, as far as setting a precedent, I think the precedent would be that people would only, or property owners would only need to buy a permit once for, for the work.
What, wasn't the sculpt different?
No, it was, it was.
I mean, they didn't have to have a sprinkler system, right?
Well, yeah, this work, the recent work didn't include any sprinkler system or.
I would think some of that would be decided or where the contractor would work with the requests for, you know, permits and stuff. And I think there was some, I don't know, that's just my opinion, I guess.
Because it, I guess.
If it was, if it was the same, if the permit was the same as before, but it wasn't.
Well, but it's covering the same framing.
Well, the same place.
Yeah, same, but they.
But it was, I mean, it didn't cover sprinklers.
Well, the, yeah, the original, they, our official required the sprinkler system, but then it's since been determined that it wasn't necessary.
I just, I just do worry about a precedent with taxpayers, taxpayers going back, you know, to.
But it's.
That's how we just mess it.
Sorry, go ahead. The same, it's all, this, the work done now is all framing, framing work that should have been covered, I mean, should have been caught twenty years ago.
Yeah, but did they, did they have an inspection?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I thought they didn't have one. I know they originally did, I guess.
Yeah, no, it was, it was all inspected at that time. You know, so these, this permit and these inspections are, are repeat of what happened, what was there twenty years ago.
Previous inspections had to be called for, didn't they?
Yeah.
So if they weren't called for, then they weren't.
Well, they, yeah, they were all, all the inspections were done because if they, yeah, if they, you know, if they weren't called in or weren't called for, it would put a, put a pause on the, on the process. I mean, the, the building official has that authority to stop, stop work, you know, at any point if inspections aren't, aren't done at the proper time.
Any other discussion? I did think there was a lot of good information you sent us. There's been a lot of, I don't know, make up, whatever you want to call it, with the other contractors and people so that they've had a significant decrease in the expense of, of this project, so I think that's good.
Pretty significant, wasn't it?
Mr. Mayor, it wanted me to.
Yes, go ahead.
There are a few things that I had to take a look, had to take a look at. Can't speak to what happened twenty years ago, obviously. What I can say is that the building code as it exists now outlines when permits have to be applied for and obtained to do certain work. Those change all the time. And so whatever it was that, that was happening recently, required based on, under the existing statutes and ordinances and building codes that we operate under, the purpose of required. Regardless of what happens in the past, that's something that is, has to happen now. Some of the concerns that exist, one is, if I understand correctly, this is reimbursement for fees already paid. Correct? So it's somewhat analogous to what we had talked about a couple of years ago with COVID and the idea of refunding money to community members from, you know, the water fund and things like that. From an audit standpoint, it would be a concern because you're basically sending out what is now considered public funds. You're reimbursing public funds and it's not clear what the underlying legal authority would be to do that other than to basically be generous. And that's fine. A lot of cities are presented with requests like this, you know, and the concern is then, again, you're, while there may be some distinction that can be made, there's always a distinction that can be made. The underlying action is kind of where the focus lie. The underlying focus is we're refunding permit money just out of the kindness of our hearts. And that's the concern. That's the Pandora's box, I guess, that a lot of people are concerned about opening. So that would be the issue. Some cities look at, you know, kind of, I don't know if this was because of the nature of the entity or it had something to do with the underlying project that prompted the desire to look at refunding part of the money. Maybe we can look at creating a different fee schedule for not-for-profit or things like that. If that's the route that the city wants to go on a grander scheme, but. on a grander scheme, but again, when you're dealing with a list of individual requests like this, that's the concern.
Thank you. Any, anything else?
I, I see a little culpability on the part of the city. Has had this been caught at the time, this, this whole hundred and thirty thousand dollar expense could have been avoided had it, had it been caught at the proper time. So that, that, that was my reason for requesting to, to address it. Just as, as a show of, I don't know, what it would be, I guess, good faith or just it'd be kind of the, all that we'd be able to do, but anyway. That was my thinking.
Okay.
I was, I was approached by this Mike Johnson, who signed the permit, he asked if we could, could look at it.
Well, it's a legitimate question. Any other discussion?
So are they thinking that the original wasn't done well?
Yeah, it was, the, the repairs that are done now go back to the original construction for things, things that weren't done properly as far as the framing of the, of the trusses. And had it, had it been done properly at that time, none of this would have been necessary now.
But that, that argument could be used for anybody that had a problem twenty years ago then.
Well-
I mean, they would believe, they would say it, well, the inspector didn't catch it, so we wanna get a refund.
I think that's what you're talking about.
It's a fine line.
Yeah.
And open up, open up way more than-
I mean, you, you know, it's, you know, it's not nice, something like that happens, but, boy.
Well, but, you know, that, I mean, the, the extent would be that they wouldn't have to buy another permit to, to repair or whatever. I mean, that's pretty, pretty limited liability.
So you're saying they just wish they needed a permit?
For, for this work? No, well, no, they need, need a permit, needs to be inspected, definitely.
But that's still an obligation we would have, is to pay a inspector.
Yeah, yeah.
Although that's already gonna be-
Sixty percent?
Sixty percent reimbursed already.
From this permit.
Yeah. So that's already, they're already getting that.
It's already given back quite a bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that, that was his choice, it didn't-
Yeah.
Didn't affect us at all, or our position.
No, well, it affects the taxpayers funding of public funds.
Yeah. Okay, if there's no other questions, because we can debate this for a long time. We should probably roll call vote, just to make sure we're clear on it.
What is motion again?
The motion is to consider the possible refund of First Baptist Church building permit. Everybody clear on the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll start in the middle this time, Lindsay?
No.
Lori?
No.
Ken?
No.
Norris?
Yes.
Me, Dave, no. So, the refund for First Baptist Church building permit?
Fails.
Fails, yes, you got that. Okay, new business, temporary off premises sales for El Jalisco Bar and Reggae, at Bar, Reggae Rock Festival. So this is for them to be down at the Reggae Rock Festival in August. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Temporary off sales, this is an addition, temporary off premises sales for El Jalisco Bar Grill and Bar for breakfast. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Breakfast passes, this is the other addition, special event application for the airport flying August fourth and sixth, through the sixth, sorry.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Anything new with that, same, same format, Legion's gonna be there for breakfast?
Yes.
Okay.
I think I, I got a meeting up today from Alliance Club, they're really involved there.
Yeah, the Lions Club will be there, too.
Good. And this has gone out to, like those, isn't there like an airport?
Yeah, the group.
Like flying group and all that, yeah, so it's getting out there?
Yep, and we'll be meeting with Gary Judd and, is it Les, I believe, from the Legion, to finalize all the plans out there.
Okay, great. We didn't get a vote on that, did we?
No.
No, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes miscellaneous council, no miscellaneous?
No miscellaneous tonight.
Um, council comments. Let me start with you again, Lindsay, since you voted first.
Nothing.
Lori?
I don't know how much we had to do with it, but the fishing thing?
Oh, the kids' event?
Yeah, they said that it wasn't near as many things for the children to do as normal. So, I don't know.
Yeah, I think they're trying to compare it to our hundred and twenty-fifth, when we really had a big event. That's why, yeah.
I just heard some-
Yeah, much scaled down from a hundred and twenty-fifth and first-
Yeah, and they weren't building something this time, but the fishing was really, I mean, they caught like a lot of fish, and some big fish.
There was a hundred and twenty-five trout, you know, in that pond, so.
It was just a parent, or a couple of parents that I got comments from, and I didn't know how much we had to do with that, so, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
I have something to go back with.
Norris?
Uh, stop now, I wrecked Park, that, that skate park addition is phenomenal. Almost enough to make me wanna take a skate bike.
Let's watch you.
I couldn't believe that, man, the thing is huge.
Yeah.
And it, and I talked to Joe down at Witch Doctor, and he's, he is just flying high, he said, this, this is gonna draw so many, they'll have so many events and things there. He said it, it just, it'll really be, really be a draw for the city.
And it's used all the time, I was there, today it was used, at Music in the Park it was used, it was, I mean, there's always kids there. Yeah, it's really good.
It'd be great.
Ken?
Yeah, oh, first of all, Jim, thanks for, and congratulations on your plaque and service, so, thank you. The other is the city, I, I, the parks and the grass really looks good on the mullein and everything. They've been doing a really good job all year long. Not so good in the winter, but so, thank you.
I just want to thank you again, Jim, too, I, that's a pretty big accomplishment, so that's pretty awesome. I have nothing else, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Return.